This is for property and the load. Oh, because we're still missing someone that is coming.
So this is, I remember about a year ago, we applied for a FEMA grant to do a stormwater management plan. And we were awarded the grant. It's a seventy-five percent grant and twenty-five percent match. The total grant cost was fifty thousand, so the grant will cover thirty-seven thousand, something of that. Maybe council authorized about a year ago to move forward with this grant. So once we got, we just found out back in August-ish that we were awarded the money. So we had the engineering company put together a scope of work through the stormwater management plan. And we have a couple of years to spend this money on this, on this plan. So. This is just a contract with the engineering company to do the stormwater management plan.
Question. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for your efforts. I have three. Rezone request from R two to R one.
So this is just something that we're trying to. Uh, look ahead. We have no imminent plans to sell or build anything. We just, we just want to have it available that. If that happens, our, our lot, I've got an application here. That, uh, I guess I need to give this to you folks. Is that right or no?
Uh, go with Joey. Yeah. And then because the planning commission. So yeah.
Two parts. That's right. And we've got four and a half acres. We want to take maybe an acre and a half, up like that. To, to do a new lot. There's the lot. So the plan is to, our, all of that stuff from like you, we would access the new lot from Valley View. Uh, we need hundred fifty feet of frontage, as we understand, to do that. There's, there's plenty to. That makes sense to see where.
So basically, we've got these two. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. The what?
Do you guys mind speaking up just a little when you talk so that we can?
They'll do it. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So does anybody have any input or comments that they would like to? Make known in advance that we can. That's my intention. Yeah. So I, I think that it could be something where.
So what I'd like to know about this meeting is, is this going to be a chance? Is this going to be a? Citizens ask Larry responds or citizens ask? And council responds or citizens ask our development committee of whatever it's called, Carrie, I apologize. Our community development committee. What is, what is the intent of this? Are, is, is the city council going to be expected to answer questions at this point? Or is this Larry answered question? I think this needs to be set now, instead of. As we're doing it, as we're trying to answer these questions for the citizens, that is really, I, I think it's meant to be a Larry is answering their, Larry and team, obviously. Is answering their, their concerns and their questions. And as city council, because. I'll be on the city council at that time. It's time for us to step back and let them. Hear from the builder. It's not time for us to make any decisions. It's not time for, uh, any. Expectations for this to be council at this point. That's my thoughts on this. I just want to make sure, see if that's what the rest of the council is thinking and, and. And what direction your, the intent is.
Right. Well, I, I, I think that, I mean, my intent is, I, I think it would be a good thing. I mean, in my mind, I think that it's something that would give us a potential tax base that we don't have. So I think that it is at least an opportunity. I mean, it's not as though we are turning shovels. Uh, it's something where the, the most we could even do at this point, I mean, I don't even know if we could do it, but it would be aiming for. Getting that property rezoned for a specific. So that would be the old, but, but. I mean, and this is why my initial, uh, thinking was, it was a little early to have this meeting at all, but. There have been some concerned residents, understandably so. And so. I just think that it's better to lay it all out there. I mean, so I would say that it would be an opportunity for it as a council member, you're being opposed to it. To make it known. If you say, I think this should never happen, I would say that's not going to do that. Or maybe after you get back to the red area.
Yeah, well, it's a little bit confusing because it says we're talking about the three bridges, which is in Salem. And so it seems we don't have, we don't have any say with what they do. So we. We're, we have to be okay with what they're doing. And I think for the most part. Salem's council was very respectful of Woodland Hills and the concessions they put in. There isn't any red, I've never heard any residents against the development at all. I think they're just worried about what the impact is. So if we're only talking about the impact to Woodland Hills. Then that would be the roundabout and the mailboxes, those kinds of things. But you're saying that it's going to be twofold then. One is going to be those types of concerns and what the developer's doing with the parcel that he's purchased. And then the second aspect would be, you want to talk about potential commercial on that piece that he put forth.
But this can, which means, yeah.
Just his piece, which is below. Um, and what I was, when he was talking at one of the meetings, I don't remember which one.
I wouldn't agree, but still. Some wild hair, this is where we think those things might end up. And this is how we're going to make sure that this remains commercial, so that residents get a feeling for. How is this development going to impact us and going to move forward?
Right. And I see that as the objective. To me, the three bridges development. I mean, it might be informational, but I think like you said, Carrie, this, that's out of our hands. To me, the whole purpose of the meeting is to. Take, I take the temperature of the residents is to, is this a direction you even want to go? And if the response is overwhelmingly negative, then. We might just say, okay, well, Larry, you're going to have to tap in someplace else. So, and that, that's why, when I was initially having these conversations at a high level. I was hoping to zero it into something that we could make as a formal presentation and say, okay, we got this offer, but. That obviously didn't work out. And, and so I, that's why I want to do it now in a very public forum to say, okay. This is the typical argument we give for us. And if there is nothing but outrage, then. That would be our answer, but.
Outrage. I think there'll be some questions on, because it is in that little area. Of, um. Might be in the flood zone or whatever. So I think people will be wondering, um, what Larry's intentions are on that property. Again, I asked him if he was going to annex in Salem and he said he wasn't sure. But he said he already bought. That's now that he told people there's going to be the stormwater. Drainage. And that's why I was asking, what do you know, based on, um, the drawings, what was required for his stormwater drainage? For how many of the ten acres are going to be taken with that? And because it's not right on the road and it's a little bit back. What the impact that commercial would have then for Woodland Hills if he took that?
Yeah, I mean, because people have answers.
The road's going to go to where the mailboxes is. So he's not going to put a commercial something there. That's the road.
Well, unless it would be the road that feeds into the commercial fill. But again, I, yeah, I mean, I, there, there are no like technical answers, but, but this is just one of those things where. I mean, we, we. There was enough pushback as to. Even the conceptual plan that I thought, okay, well, let's just see if this is something.
So there's, there's, there's still a lot of concern with the residents down there, uh, because I talked to them, um, about. Every time he's talked about, okay, we're not going to connect to your roads. Unless there is both sides and us all agree. So it's still not off the table. There's still a bit of woodland hills involved in this.
Um, the roundabout for sure.
The roundabout, but I'm talking about connecting to, to Maple. That has still been his, his words every single time is. Unless woodland hills and the residents and we, you know, all agree and, and everybody wants it, right? That's, that's been his words.
Yeah. And I, I don't see that that will happen. I think that Maple.
I don't either, but we've all held up this, this, uh. But every one of us has held up this, we want to have this fire escape, right? We want to have this additional fire escape route that.
It's already there.
Agreed that it's already there, but there's a little bit of legality. Involved in this as well, right? Um, there, there, there's quite a.
Go ahead and finish your thought, Robert.
But, but I think there's still some more woodland hills involved in this. And that's what I'm trying to see is. Is this really for Larry to, to, to talk to the residents and let them know what his thoughts are? There's a ton of work before we're going to know any of this. Where we're going to know where this drainage is going to be, where, where we're going, what they're going to have to do up along. The houses on, 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 uh, Maple. There's a ton of engineering that's still got to be done, right? And, and this is all super, super, super preliminary.
I totally agree, but there's enough emotion that.
There's a huge.
We got at least in front of everybody.
And that's, that's why I wanted some direction on, but what should I be prepared for?
No, fair question.
Is, is, are we answering questions as a city council or is Larry answering the questions? As the builder or, or what?
I don't say come, I mean, any even preliminary thoughts that you have about the prospect? I mean, and your concerns.
Is, is the salt shed a hundred percent gone? I mean, that's, and I, I don't know that that's a hundred percent.
Yeah. I mean, those, those are the two pieces that he seemed most, I mean, those, those were the.
Yeah, and.
That was the fruit that he wanted. And so, and that seemed like, well, that might be something that we can work with.
But, but there's, the, the people have very little, uh. Want for a, a, a workshop down where the salt shed is. They don't like the idea of people down there pounding and banging and, and impact wrenches going and tractors going all the time. That was, that was their concern. So I think some of this is. Golf course maintenance, right? Um, and so. I get it. I, 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 I get it a hundred percent.
We don't.
Yes, but we own this.
But I, I don't know that we can. Require any.
No, no, I, I get that. But I think this is, I, I saw this as a chance for Larry to sit down. With our residents and say, look, this is my plan and hear what their concerns were and say, okay, this is what, this is what we'll work on.
Yeah. I mean, the, the way I see it, and, and. I think that that's a point well taken. The way I see it is this is an opportunity that, in my mind. We can say, okay, look, here is at least a potential for some.
Test the log.
Self property. And, and yeah, there are a lot of pieces that still need to be filled in. But, I, I mean, this is the long range, sort of an effort that we're trying to at least. Gauge what the resident feedback is. And, and, and like I said, I mean, honestly, that, that's why I. I, I probably wouldn't have chosen to do this meeting this early on in the process because it is very vague, but. But I also know that in not engaging residents earlier. People felt a, a sense of betrayal and I don't want that.
And maybe a planned, regular. You know, once a quarter or something like that with Larry would be something we could actually work out during. Where, where he could actually talk to us.
Still, but in his words, this is, there's quite a dream. It's not necessarily.
Yeah, it's so, so preliminary.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with that. All right, Ted.
Well, well, it really is not that relevant. So it's not, um. I was just saying, one of the things we also just have to keep in mind is there are some contractual obligations. That the cities have made when this development changed or was annexed. So we've got to kind of. Balance that with what we're working on with the developers and his contractual obligations, because it's, it's some, some critical things to our city as well, I think.
It is. So do we?
Thank you.
Um, just as a follow-up to this, then do we, have we started identifying places if we sell the salt shed? Because I know it's important for the snowplow drivers that it's at the bottom of the hill. Um, do, have we identified a place for that, a place for the, um. For the mailboxes, because we don't own any other property down there as a city. And so the property would have been purchased from a current private property owner and we'd have to be done with for those things. And so. There's a lot of dominos here calling in some.
These dominos, also Larry's problem.
Mm-hmm. They are his problem.
If he wants some, then he's got to find a solution, present that as the solution, and then we would say yea or nay. For me, mayor, I think with this meeting, my main goal would be. There's so much hearsay. You know, the mayor said this, Larry said this, and then the backdoor conversations, and it's created this, a lot of minutia and confusion. That's what I'd love to gain clarity on, right? What has been discussed? What are the plans? What are the hopes? What are the concerns of the residents? And from our side, I just love that clarity and then let the citizens, the residents of the city be, be heard. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't disagree with that. But I, but I, I, I do think also that, I mean. It, th- this will at least to some extent be a pivoting point. I mean, if, if it's something that just. There's, there's not any interest in, then it'll be like, well, I'm not going to waste my time chasing this thing down. This is something that, uh, that will just go in a different.
That's fair. I just, I was just hoping for some, some established direction of what we wanted to.
Yeah. And I mean, I, 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 I hope that helps. I don't know that there's much more beyond that.
Prepare for the worst kind of thing.
Oh, we can do act on anything till something's proposed to.
But we can, we can, that's the thing is we can moderate the meeting. If we decide that the city council and the mayor is not going to answer questions, we can say that right at the very beginning. That this is Larry's opportunity. That's what I'm curious of.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I think he should have an opportunity to, to speak and either be for or against or neutral.
That's, that's fair enough. That's kind of what I was hoping for.
Well, I think that there's not going to be a lot of for and against because we don't have anything to be for and against. We don't have the information.
Well, I think that there are some that would be philosophically opposed to commercial development. I, I do think that there are some that would just say, we don't want it and we don't care where the, we don't want it.
That Larry's going to propose to us, because he didn't seem like he was.
No, that's, that would be, that's our bargaining. So what we would do is we would say, because what it would require him to do is it would require him to lock up that land. It would require him to lock up that land with fairly restrictive zoning requirements that.
Can we put it in there for him not to annex though?
Yeah, I will. I mean.
I don't, I assume we can. I don't know, because anything that's on a border has the ability to, in annexation laws, to annex into the next city. So we should have to, we start looking at our borders and recognizing that. But I don't know if we can. Put it in. I don't know. We need to maybe check on that. Um.
Well, and if we can't. If we can't, then, I mean, that's, that ends the conversation. If it's something that we can't block up, then at that point, I mean, these are all various steps. But again, what this meeting is intended to do is to, to give us some sense as to which direction we're even pointing.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else from anybody on that? We're, we're still missing. I'm, I'm just wondering, okay. No, it's, it's, it's all good. Uh, we, we got plenty of other. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Uh, September financials and check approvals is, is Chris on?
Can you hear me okay? I guess I'm on TV.
You're not on TV, sorry.
Oh, okay. I had some things to share. That's okay. You guys have the financials there in front of you?
Yeah, we do. Ellis, which line you're looking at?
Any, well, I guess, is there any questions first of all?
Chris, is this where I asked you?
This would be a good time to ask questions. Yes.
I, uh, I would be the financials and I just had a question of curiosity. Um, this thing that's, that's in, uh, Chris's email to us says, uh. Over twenty-five percent of the budget this year has been inspired. Uh, through these, the, the financials. We have received, and this, this is my question, we've received fourteen percent of our revenue and ten, nineteen percent of our expenses. And I wondered if that's typical in a year, do we spend? Like we spend in the red? I, I don't know how we do that. We have a big bank account or something?
Yes. So we have, um, that's, that's why we can carry, have our fund balance each year and have a positive carryover to help with some of the cash flows from year to year. Like, um, in our PTIF, this county and our state is dropping in all the property taxes. The majority of property taxes are in right now. Um, so we just have three or four months that we have to use basically cash flows from the previous year to, to. To hold the city.
Okay. So this is not an abnormal.
No.
Well, because we spend a lot on roofs in the summer. We don't. We spend more on snowplowing in the winter. So. You know, your spending goes like this. You have to have savings buffer because you don't get your revenues until later in the year.
One case where it's different than my home. If I don't get revenue, I usually don't have.
Right, yeah. Then my second question, um, our electric bill. As soon as for one month runs around nine hours.
Yes. So that was correct.
Okay. And, and, and what is included in that electricity? Is it our pumps at the wells and the city center? Is it included all of that?
So the particular one you're looking at is in the. Uh, the enterprise fund or the water fund, and that one includes the upper wells, the lower wells. A- anything that deals with water, the park, the mailboxes, the roundabout and the city center and the general, uh, on page two or three. But the one you're referring to is all the water pumping it up.
So you get. Two bills, say, from the electric company then?
Yeah, we get, I think we get four or five, but then we just combine them all, actually get it six, and then we just combine them to general and or water.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I had to ask.
And that one's going to be high because that's towards the end of the summer. And so those were the. Higher usage plus the thirty-nine percent or forty percent, um, upcharge that they. Uh, change their rates from last year to this year.
Okay. Hey, Chris, can you give me an, uh, understanding of? Four, one, four, one point six, four, nine? That is repairs and maintenance for city facilities.
Yes, that one is higher because we need to change the budget and bring the cameras off the balance sheet. Onto the profit loss statement. So that's the down payment. The reason that's over is the down payment for the camera system. We've only paid fifty percent of it.
Okay. And what happened? To the fifty percent we paid to the last set of cameras? Did we ever end up getting any of that back?
We did. We got all but a small portion back because of a restocking fee. I think it was less than. Seven hundred bucks.
Well done on that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Thanks, Chris, and happy birthday. Joyce, we all sing happy birthday to you.
Uh, I'd just like a solo from the mayor.
Yeah, I would too.
Happy birthday and thank you for spending some of your birthday evening with us.
Thank you. Dinner looks good. So thank you.
It is. Well, I expect it will be. All right. Yeah, I know. It'll soak to the bottom of your. Large purchase request, additional extrication equipment. Ted, I imagine this is, uh. Something, uh.
Yeah, this is just in the future, just. Uh, we're probably not going to really address that clock for the first year or something.
Okay, yeah. I, maybe if you just make it for the record.
Table that for.
Yeah, I'd say it was table that. Oh, sorry. So we're, we're trying to get a little bit of a handle. We've been, obviously, we've been clipping the new engine and. We've come a little bit under the budget, so we're looking at some options, uh, to better to get some more equipment. We'll probably. Come back maybe after the first year with that. With that, a little more information on that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, actually this. Update emergency exit between three tenths out. Update emergency exit between three ten south Maple and three forty south Maple.
Yes. Do you want me to take that?
Yeah.
So. I have been, and I I probably should have booked on the, unless Janet, did you dig into that at all, by chance? From the flat standpoint, I should have reached out to you. I dug through as much as I could from my limited. Knowledge of plat- understanding. Um, there is an easement on the property right now that has just been put in and.
Which property are we talking?
We're talking about the Selby's property down on Maple. Thank you. Now, this is for. This was granted by the the Selby's and. Also, um, the marriage, correct?
Yes.
But mostly you. And so it looks like they were extremely charitable. Um, but basically they were kind of put in a rock and a hard place due to the fiber. The fiber box that maintains a lot of the city sits kind of kind of on that road. Um, and for ten dollars. We we got this easement. And this easement is and other goods, so for the sum of ten dollars and other good and valuable consideration, the following des- descriptive easement for utilities and access. And for maintenance of the same on the following described real property located in Utah County. So it doesn't say anything from what I can find, and hence my question to Janet concerning anything, you know, around fire. Um, and this was dated just, you know, a few years ago in twenty nineteen. Right? Now that easement's there, and I thought we have a. A screen that I could throw all this up there for you guys. But I took some pictures today. Just to kind of give a little bit of of context there. Around what we're looking at. Um, so let me see if I can at least show what I can here. So this is from the backside. And you kind of see to a degree, and my drone wouldn't go down. I was trying to fly from my house because I was lazy. So. It just doesn't show really the steepness of that road quite clearly. And for those in the back row over there, because nobody likes the front row.
It's just a church, people, you can move up.
Yeah, exactly. Right, um. There is a couple of different safety issues there that has brought to my attention. I don't have any personal experience, but there is a type of grass that grows on this trail. That apparently likes to lay down and becomes like super slayer. And so that's one aspect of here. Now, here's another thing that I find fascinating from the standpoint of, and I'm I'm. This is our property at the end of said easement. Okay? There's no fire escape going on right now with that property. Because we blocked it all off here. Right? So we've got trailers and everything inside. What do you got there, boss?
Just the parcel map.
Good. Alright, so we have trailers in the way. Now, also on the other end. Uh, there's a better picture there, kind of zoomed in there. So you can see it quite clearly. We blocked it all. And then kind of right beneath the top. There's a, there's a telephone pole. That the Selby's have pulled across. Because they've had quite a few number of nuisance activities on the trail. Right?
Horses, ATVs. All sorts of stuff come in the yard.
Exactly, right? And so my suggestion would be. For us to grant permission for the sign to come down, right? And for that to revert basically back to. The the definition of what the current easement is stating here. Unless Janet can find something else that actually clearly articulates a fire easement. Um, but that would be my s- my standpoint, um. Do you have anything you want to to bring forward to the council?
Well, I wasn't planning on it, but I will speak. Um, remind me to, yeah, look, Don for not being here.
Yeah, he's he's on elk hunting. He he wanted a feedback report, but.
So my, our concern is right now. We are told that we're liable for anything that happens on that road. So when those ATVs come in and the horses and if somebody falls. And gets hurt, they're suing me. Okay, it's not a road for anybody to be on, whether it's a vehicle or otherwise. It is super steep. And if you slide, at one point, you're going right off the hill. And if I'm responsible for that, I want it closed. I do not want to be sued on a piece of land that I have no say and it's not. Accessible for anybody to use and not get hurt in general. I mean, you slid down that and it's scary.
So currently, we just have an easement with you. You still own the property. We just have an easement to use it for those things that are that have been bred. Could we, besides putting down the signs, could we put up a gate at that bottom part that then would not allow people to come up and put no trespassing? So that it's um clearly marked because. Uh, deputy, if it's marked, no trespassing and they get injured on it, is it still the homeowners?
I I don't know that. I know if they're on there, they could be cited because there's there's.
That we that we can be sued, period.
Even if it's closed?
Even if it's closed. It well, no, excuse me, if it's closed with the gate and there's a sign, that's correct. That that's totally, that's totally fine. Right now, how it sits, that's not happening. So as of today, that. That could be the the case. Now, down below, they're not coming up because of the trailers, but they do come up on our side and they use my driveway. To get around any obstacles. And that is not okay with us. I have grandkids running around and they touch one of my grandkids and it will not be pretty.
Through the driveway. Bypassing the telephone pole because they don't want to get money.
So we need a gate on both sides.
That's correct.
Yeah, gate on both sides, no trespassing signs.
And then we're good.
Ted, that's not a road that we maintain either, right? Is that that's more of an historical road? Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, so that's, we don't maintain that road and and my understanding was, you know, historically, that was emergency access prior to Summit Creek Drive being built and. Uh, Will Reed being built and that was kind of when half of the town existed. So I don't know this one, like I said, I don't know that's really. A viable access anymore. Uh, but yeah, we don't maintain it, nor is I think it designated as an emergency access. It's more of a utility.
Oh, no, there's a sign.
Yeah, but I'm not sure in our easement that it says that.
Said at the time because we needed other access points or emergency access point, then we didn't have Will Reed, we didn't have Summit Creek, and so it was put in. Knowing that it's our last ditch effort, like nobody's going down there unless you absolutely have to. And of course, through time. And erosion and other things, that road has just become not usable.
Yeah, not. But when you guys did this annex, how come you were never notified?
We don't do the annex.
So who does it that they just?
Salem annexed, the property owner on the other.
No, this, you said. I'm sorry, the easement, not any, the easement.
Was recorded, there was a um. It would have to do with the fiber, and so when you connected with the fiber, you didn't much pay the connection fee.
Yeah, so right here.
Understood, but it that's, that's why that became an, okay, alright.
Yeah, but that's, like I said, this is. No, I'm not a, I'm not Janet. But, you know, this seems to me like it is an easement granted for utilities. Right? Not for.
Trails or.
And so for me. When I sat there and I, we walked all over the property, um, the three of us. Um, you know, and really, their their concern from my understanding was predominantly around risk. And their fear of what happens if somebody does get hurt, you know, and they are liable. And their their homeowner insurance has said also that they're liable, correct?
A one hundred percent.
And so with their grandkids there playing and then just random people, you know, I think, I don't know if you were there, Laurel. But I know that Dawn was telling me, her husband was telling me that at one point they did a fire event. And Clint took his bug.
Yeah, I was there. It was an event. It was a, it was an eventful training.
Good training. But the kid did it now.
Drove it down. Yeah, he stuck one of these boys in it and they pushed it, but it went down, but now I, and and. I mean, to your point, if if that were to remain or if there was any thought to keep it as an an access, it would be something I think the city. Would virtually have to take over ownership of, and we would want to improve that. As it stands now, I don't see it being used as an emergency access. It's. Said it's just not a very viable access, pretty dangerous in fact. And if you got multiple cars trying to head down that thing and one ran off or tipped you, then you're blocking. Several other cars. I mean, right now. In order, I I don't know that I would feel comfortable with emergency access right.
So I think, I mean. Just from what I've heard. My understanding is what the city should do almost immediately is remove the sign.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, that that's kind of the most basic thing that we can do that would. Alleviate the problem. I'm not sure the city would be the ones responsible for any gate.
Or private property, no trespassing sign.
Or those, I think that's the owners.
Well, we did put up, there was a chain there. And we were told we had to take it down.
Yeah, and and that would change, right? We would agree that you.
We can block it off, but I can't do anything down below.
I think the only thing typically in.
Why can't we have you block it off below?
With easements, with easement, you can't put any permanent. Structural elements in the easement, and that's just the fact if you have to do the utility, if you don't want to be carrying out garages or houses or other structures, yeah, yeah. But if you put something that can be removed and put back a gate, you know, you'll be okay using.
Put the chain back. If Utopia had, they're all locked on the the chain as well.
Whatever utility.
People go around the chain, past the gate.
Well, wha- whatever it is.
Put up a gate if I were you and then give me.
Is that easement with the city or with Utopia?
So just an access, access to the fiber goes up there. That's why we got the easement to begin with.
Well, if it's buried down there, they had to dig it up. So the easement is with the city.
But for utilities and there's only one utility in that location.
And that box is right behind my house for them to get to. But I can't put anything down below because I don't own that property. That has nothing. It's you guys is on the.
Yeah, I think we do.
So if we own the bottom, we could then put a gate on.
Yeah, that's your, at the top, that's fine. We can deal with the top one, but the bottom one, I don't have any. Right? But it has to be, right now, like you said, it is blocked. So nobody's coming up, and when they go down. They've got to come straight up because there's no way to get around that. But. Coming on my property has become a big issue.
I think it's a no brainer to remove the sign.
And then we can.
Can we pull the sign and leave the bolt and then you can put? A sign on the bolt?
You are to.
If we get to do what we want, I'm gonna leave that up to my husband because I guarantee you that people will not be crossing that when he's done.
But do you want the pole theft is what we're saying?
Oh, I I don't know.
Sure they're G-rated words.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah. Could be okay, then you can put stuff on here.
Pole, you could use the pole.
Yeah, to get it out.
Put your sign on it, is that, yeah, just so you don't have to another expense.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that, so if they ever have to dig up, they don't have to tear stuff out.
So who am I ever to be responsible for pulling that sign?
And that'd be public works.
I can help you with that. I, it looks like it's pretty easy to take down.
We've actually got two of them to take down. We still have one up here, so it makes sense to see if Zach can.
Thanks, Ben.
Historical purposes there for your. Everybody's awareness, we had an emergency evacuation practice. And we sent twenty, thirty cars down that road, Cadillac included. It made it, I mean, everybody made it, but. Yeah, I think it's worth now, Chad. And being involved right now, I'd be dangerous, but yes, thank you.
All right, uh, how about the thirteen ten South Eagle test?
That's it, I guess. Oh, Janet, that's um, Santos, Santos. And what am I? When you take the sign down. Everything else has been, we've already talked about it. You've already done everything. We just need to get the sign down. I didn't realize we hadn't done that.
Yeah, the sign is still up there. They've put a whole bunch of no trespassing signs up now and they're kind of using that pole so it gets to leave the pole there. And take down the emergency access sign. I think that was the last thing. I think the council agreed last time we'd keep the easement. Um, they couldn't block it, uh, we would just take down our sign.
So I can message him and let him know within the next week that that sign should finally be down? Is that okay?
Weekish. What's that? Weekish.
Okay.
We authorize him to take it down and bring it to us? If he wants it down like we now, can we just say, take the sign down and bring it over to the office?
I don't have a concern with that if you're good.
Yeah.
Are you okay to take it down?
Yes.
Just put it on by the front door, just lean it against the building. Okay, we'll know where, who it came from.
Actually, that's, that'll be a really funny joke.
That might make it easier.
Right? Thank you. I'll message you. Hey, uh, it looks like uh. We got everyone that we need for item one. Hey, how you doing?
Good, hey.
Good, thanks. Okay, so uh, we've got uh, repair statements and clarification regarding recent comments made. During the November twenty twenty twenty-three public safety.
Yes, um. Mayor and members of the city council and members of the public. At the public safety committee committee news meeting held on November twentieth twenty twenty-three. It was brought to my attention that I made some inaccurate statements. Regarding the gun display at the November seventh, Be Ready Woodland Hills meeting hosted by Spencer Wells. And and others that helped him. After reviewing the city recorded video and my statements, I realized that I owe Spencer Wells an apology. As well as a public attempt to set the record straight. I also apologize to Rand and others that were key in uh, getting that meeting together. Here is what I said, and this is a long quote from the recording. I attended the home security meeting. Spencer Wells helped organize that and it was a very good meeting. People were really, there were a lot of people attending. But I wanted to just make everyone in this group, speaking of the public safety. In this group aware that I was bothered by all the weapons on the front table with ammo right with them. And all of these weapons were laying there and people were picking them up, flipping magazines in and some guns. When you put a magazine in, bullets are ready to go. So I'm just telling this whole group that if you ever hear about another one of these meetings, I want to suggest this is how you do a gun show. You take your weapon, you don't put your weapons on the table ready to fire. They were freaking ready to fire. I I then displayed two guns that I brought. For that meeting and showed plastic ties to the firing mechanism and magazines were empty of ammo. End of quote. Um, I grossly misspoke. At this public safety meeting. Some of the guns were picked up, but no one was inserting or flipping magazines into them. The truth of what I saw was that at the gun display, I saw a magazine loaded with ammo lying next to a handgun. I also saw a single bullet bullet lying next to another weapon. Neither weapon was ready to fire. I appreciate Spencer calling me out on this. There are several ways that I could have and should have voiced my concerns. All of which were were by speaking to him privately at first. I believe Spencer to be a professional when it comes to firearms and firearm safety. And I should have trusted that. And I should have trusted that he had everything under control. Spencer, I apologize and to everyone, I apologize and thank you for allowing this opportunity.
Well, Doral, recently, you know, I, I, uh, want to start off and just say that I'm grateful for the opportunity that I could, uh. Um, make a statement as well, that first and foremost, is, one of the, the more difficult things that we have to do is. Own what we say, whether it's accurate or inaccurate, and then if it's inaccurate, make the, the groundwork. So that, that we can come together and work, continue working together. And it is my privilege and honor to work together with a wonderful group of individuals we have both volunteer and elected. Uh, we're doing the best we can and are often fallible in our intent and our statements. First and foremost, I appreciate the concerns that were voiced regarding the meeting of the Be Ready Within Hills, in which I taught the observation reporting skills. I also taught a portion on better home security and invited a subject matter expert who's sitting here with us, served first class retired. Uh, Ren Murray. Um, who also served as a Green Beret with, with, uh, combat tours in Afghanistan. Ren is a security and firearms expert who instructed the final portion in which. Uh, the firearm safety, uh, for, for your home, how to conduct your suspended homeland firearm, how to, um. Protect your family and first and foremost, what steps need to be taken. Um, I'd like to reiterate that at no time was there, there, was there ever a threat while the firearms were on display. It has been brought to my attention that despite the lack of, of that perception. Or with that perception and the, 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 the lack of threat, we can all work to increase our security posture. Anytime we have open display of firearms, and I think that's vitally important that. With what was, what was perceived, we, that. Lends credibility to what, what we were doing, that we need to increase our security posture in all places. Um, I'd like to propose that if we have a public meeting in which firearms are displayed, ammunition will be held by the instructor in a positive control manner. Safety is everybody's job, and if there's a perceived safety violation during a training meeting, anybody. Can and should halt the training and address the concern immediately. When we all feel safe in training, it only enhances the outcome. Professionalism is our watchword. And as we work to better our community through cooperation, mutual respect and positive, that we can, we can all find better understanding. And forward movement in the direction that is mutually beneficial to everybody involved. Um, I'd like to thank the members of this city council and ask for their continued support in the mission of readiness with the Be Ready Woodland Hills. Volunteers are, that, that we're all working to accomplish. Thank you, Rick Doral, thank you very much, and thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Spencer, and so. Okay, and I just want to applaud, uh, both Spencer and Doral for the very constructive way that they addressed this issue, and thanks for being here tonight and. Thanks for your service to our community and our country. Um, okay, well.
I'd like to say thank you too for coming over here and helping our residents, I know that it's, uh. It's not always easy coming to a smaller community that, you know, that people are. Coming to learn and new things and we appreciate your professionalism in coming and. And being willing to train them and help them understand and. And of course, we appreciate Spencer and what he's been trying to do and working with our deputy to have, um. Our neighborhood watch program, not only looking out for their own individual homes, but for our community overall, so. Thank you for coming back and, uh, and thank you to Doral and Spencer for working that out.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Yeah, I, I, uh. The most important thing I said correctly in that meeting I spoke at was it was a very good meeting. I, I would like to see more, more of them and, uh, I love weapons, I have some myself and, uh. And they, they're a great tool, I, I. And I, I want our citizens to learn all they can, and so thank you guys for having, and for your service.
Super cool program you guys have. And the other communities, the neighborhood, they come together and trade. So I was happy to go.
Yeah, coming up here, you know, meeting some people, uh, along, you know, in that meeting. Hopefully after this, you know, it's a pleasure to come up here and Spencer's new, uh, area of residence and. Can't wait to talk to you guys, uh, a little bit more afterwards to get to know you a little bit better.
I would love that, I will behave myself.
That's a promise from Doral.
I'm on record.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, yeah. Oh, Wayne's got a prepared statement too, I hear that now.
No, uh, I've been an NRA firearms instructor for a large part of my life and a range officer as well. In, uh, in civil service, but if the city doesn't have a policy and procedures. For handling things like that, I would suggest that we put one together.
And we did task Spencer with that.
Okay, great, so in the future, we can benefit from, from the discussion and, and everything else.
Great suggestion.
Okay.
Thanks, Lee.
And I don't know where we are in that, but I know that.
This close.
Okay, well, somewhere between here and here, right? Okay, well, thank you. All right, well, uh, then we can now, uh, move on to item one, update on city grants. Such as they are. Um, Carrie, items A and.
Number A, um, for community development. Of course, we were, um, I, I met last week with, uh, Chris Elby. Who is starting to write the RFP for that, we had a good discussion, um. And to just bring him up to date on where we're at and what we're doing, what the purpose of that grant was and, and. They have changed some people at the office. Um, that we have worked with in the past, they had given me some examples to give to him. But it was in a document where it was just a repair only, not a keep only. And so now there's somebody new in that office and I'm going to be connected with her this week and see if we can still have those, um, to look at for, um. Uh, for examples of others that are doing this same type of thing, um. And to showcase what we want, what we want with our RFP. And then our committee would like to start meeting at the beginning of the year and our timetable is. To probably put this RFP out sometime in the middle of January. Um, have, um. The window open for, uh, fourteen days, I think Chris said, and then we would have some blind, um, review of the RFPs. And then start in the spring. Okay, so that's our time table on that one. The Harper Grant, we can three phase power to Broadholate, I don't see Mark Sylvane here, this. Has he said anything on where we're at with that Ted, on, uh, potentially getting, using that money going forward? He hasn't given me an update.
Yeah, I've been spending the last couple of days with Marcus and we've talked quite a bit, and. Will be again tomorrow, um. Yeah, so we, we, they were waiting on the quote from S E S D. Find out how much money we're gonna have to spend for that three phase power and a few other upgrades. We got the quote, I think it was last week. And it's, I think, well within the budget, so now the discussion is, do we want to move forward? Um, I know they got three phase power conduit part of the way there, or most of the way there. So this is for the, um, switchgear and transformer, the additional transformer and switchgear and. Holding the wire and the rest of conduit, uh, which I think with the quote we have from S E S D and the impact fee. Fits within the budget.
Okay, and how long will that take to, to fit, once, once you have that in place? How long will it take to finish? I mean, are we gonna do it winter? I mean.
Um, yes, ish.
Okay.
It's, it's like number sixteen on my list there, but no, it's, um. It's, we're working on, so what I'm working on with, um. Mark, um, once we get through this, kind of this training thing or working on some certifications right now. We're gonna go meet at the well and just go through everything that needs to be finished up. We did order and I think I paid for the D F D. This needed, so we do have that up there, so with that, we're gonna go make just a list, we're gonna get, and have everything that needs to be. Finished to complete this, so the goal is to have that done this month and then, you know, come January, we can start. Working on those items and just chipping away at getting them. I mean, a lot of it's S E S D is getting a wire full in the transformers now, but. So. It's a work in progress, getting there.
You're next on the agenda, so.
All right, yeah, right to you, I have seen. Fire grants, um, license plate, brand and brush clearing.
Yeah, so, um. About two months ago, I applied for a grant to. This is the proceeds they get from doing the personalized firefire license place the state gets. And they award so much money to the fire departments out of that grant, I applied a couple of months ago and we were awarded five thousand dollar grant. Um, for that, so the intent of that was to replace our helmets for the fire department, our helmets are. The newest helmet we have expired two years ago. So, and, and our, some of our older helmets expired fifteen years ago, so. It was time to replace them, um, so we're gonna use that grant money to replace those helmets, um. So we're gonna be working on that here soon, and then, um. Each year, we, last year, I don't know why we didn't get the grant, but anyway, we applied for a grant that helps us with our chipper days. It's the money that allows us to use the county's chipper when we have chipper days and stuff like that, so I'm working on a grant with. Um, state forestry right now, uh, that will apply for that money, I think it's up to five thousand dollars. Grant money to use it, to use the county chipper and things like that for chipper day, so I'm working on that, due to the end of this month, so I'm working with them on that.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Parks Trails and Recreation Grant.
Um, nothing on that, I'm just. Still, it's the same as last time, um, just extending to the spring and a lot of parks. Um, anything else has been done?
Just for your information, so, um, the trails study that you and Jeremy.
Yeah.
Uh, submitted to that, I was at a meeting yesterday where that was considered, I, Jeremy wasn't there, so I gave a brief pitch. I don't know that that is, uh, there's a lot of. Big ticket items, uh, and not nearly enough money, we restored about seven tier races, so I don't know yet, but at least.
You thought we had a better shot at it this time, but.
Well, we were yellow in the MAGA assessment, or the five hundred projects, according to MAGA, that were in the green, so.
Okay.
So we're not red, which would, uh, uh. I mean, it, it's not a lot of money that we're asking for comparatively, but. I, I, I didn't get the sense that there was a high level of. Interest, but you know.
It's all about connectivity, they're giving more money to those that connect into other existing trails.
And this does do that, this ties us into a regional trail network, the thing that it, I mean. The regional trail network can go on with or without this Woodland Hills trail, so they don't really need us as bridging the gap. But the most scenic endpoint that you can imagine and the biggest elevation gain, I think, in the whole network, so. Yeah, I know. Spanx crowd should really, uh, go for this one.
Well, the e-bikes are, are bringing the, the less by heart now.
All right, thanks, Janet.
Yeah, I was messaging Tim Shanto, he's super excited. You probably have a sign on him, it'll probably be there first thing in the morning.
Waterline replacement grant? Any update there?
Um, nothing really, we haven't heard back on the grant yet, I said, that was the one we applied or through the. Um, governor's office, um, they haven't, last I heard, they hadn't awarded those yet or started, you should know, so. We haven't heard anything, so, just waiting to hear on that.
All right, thank you, sorry you made that wrong.
I, I'm, I'm really excited, I mean, this is my week number two now in the city, uh, full time and, and just, uh, I'm, I'm excited. About the opportunity this one, for a second, this is, this is kind of, this is kind of fun to be able to work in the community, help the community also. I'm living the dream now, yeah, living the dream and, and it's, it's fun to leave my house at seven thirty and be to work by seven thirty five or seven thirty three, so. Yeah, so, uh, I'm excited for the opportunity, look forward to working, we're, the city, we're doing a bunch of trainings now, so hopefully get things planned out right now, but.
I heard, well, Ted's sitting there, can I throw this in, please? A neighbor came to me and he wanted to mark our hydrants on their, with the poles that are on the wrong side of the street, so the snow poles, you know. So we moved our street, our street's all done. We just went to where the old hydrant was and ripped out the pole, put it in the ground by the new hydrant. And we started to look up oak and then all of the wrong, there's some of them on the wrong side, if we could put that on that to do list. It'd be nice to have it before snow, if we're gonna lose some hydrants maybe, so that big long orange pole helped us. Find hydrants in the past, so.
Good point, is with the last water project we did, we ended up putting hydrants on the other side of the road, so it's probably why. Yeah, we're gonna move them over away from the old hydrants, and I think. I think part of the to do is to, I think we've still got to remove some old hydrants, that was, I think, on, so I was on that. Been on the to do for a while, but.
And, and I will say that Ted has already built one whiteboard and, and. See, this will teach you to express enthusiasm.
Dora, we're looking for volunteers to move orange poles, if you know of anybody down on Oak Circle or somewhere, this. Someone's already got practice.
Thank you.
You can give me a sign.
All right, Wayne, uh, Municipal Subdivision Ordinance Technical Assistance Grant, we have an update there.
Um, no, no real update, just a reminder that this, this grant was made to. Companies that will be helping rural cities. To rewrite the ordinance relating to a new state legislation in SB one seventy four bill. And, um. So. Or probably last on the list because we don't have to meet a February deadline, we meet a December twenty twenty four deadline. So there's a lot of, uh. Cities that have to meet that February deadline, so they'll be given priority in helping to. By these companies to help them rewrite their ordinance, and there's some benefit to us because we can use a lot of that rewrite ourselves. That will already have been done, so, uh, I've reached out to the company and to the attorney. Let them know that we're interested, put us on the list, and so I'll continue to communicate with them and. Let them know we're interested in taking advantage of their knowledge and expertise. In redrafting our subdivision ordinance, which needs to be done with the major changes the state made in the subdivision law. So that's kind of where we're at with, uh, with it. In the works.
Thank you. Hey, city council reports.
And so we have, uh, not met really for anything that's applicable to this body with the solid waste district. Um, and we haven't met with roads and. You know, I'll leave, uh. The Parks Trails and Recreation to Janet.
Well, uh, Councilmember Keston.
All right, um. Nine one one dispatch, we haven't held a meeting. So it's coming up, but we haven't had it for a while, nothing to report there except we got a letter from dispatch. They said our, our hardware that controls our city sirens. Needs to be pulled from their building by February first. So, uh, we probably will follow up on that in January to make sure we get that. Figure out if we're gonna bring it up here or if we're gonna put it over at another location down there, so something to work on there. Um, the second thing is public safety, um. Eight attended our public safety meeting and, uh, I was impressed, uh. A resident by the name of Chloe Cleveland, most of you know her, she attended along with Jim Anis. Jim Anis is a member of that, of our committee, he's been on for the whole, all the years I've been on the council, so he's, he's really. A talented individual, a retired police officer from California, had a lot of interesting, um. Life stories and history to, to teach them. Uh, back to Chloe, she was there to express concern about people parking after night. At the end of the cul-de-sacs where we want to have signs that say no parking after dark. So we addressed that and would like to, for now, we're gonna start trying to start calling and giving the sheriff's office when we see. Be people there at two in the morning making a noise, so.
Yes, question for you, is there any time we want people parking in the cul-de-sac? Now, I get it, you know, you've got people there that. We, we do live on the fourth and the twenty fourth, um, that is the one. Well, yeah, that, that's fine, I think holidays have exceptions to them, I'm just wondering. What, what good is granted by us allowing, like, my question is, is why after dark? Well, I, why just say no parking in cul-de-sac now? I also understand that, you know, if it's a family and you live on the cul-de-sac, right, I'm. I also understand that, you know, if it's a family and you live on the cul-de-sac, right, I'm I'm. Referring more to the one Chloe's talking about, the northern cul-de-sac.
Right.
If you have people coming over, you know, then that's different, but she's. She has problems with the lights and the music and the and the. And the and the other activities that are going on. And I just wonder. Is there a way that we can?
She has one of those big flashlights that are really, right?
They they have things of that nature. Um, but it's own risk, but.
Different requirements.
I mean, I, in my mind, it's it's a public street, though. Well, we're a slaughter. Well, yeah. And and I think we can make certain assumptions that. Yeah, I mean, I I I don't know that I would necessarily be in favor of an outright ban pardon.
Is. Something to think about.
Yeah, I would like to go there and see the sunset and I like. Whatever. I'm like, well, never mind, I didn't mean to skip that. From my house, I have very, I have trees, like, I mean, I have a big view, but I also have kind of a limited view, so sometimes I try to drive to another part of the land hills if there's something I wanna see. Like, I can't see the moon until like three in the morning, right, so I'll drive to the other part of town to try and see it when there's something cool with the moon and. You go there and I mean, you know, you you don't even wanna be there, because there's kids making out in the car or more. It's bad.
I was too, Janet.
Yes, I was.
I I just think that, uh, I mean, if they're violating other laws, then we got. Grounds to enforce those, but I mean, someone whether they're, I mean, obviously if they're violating decency laws.
It should be just a question. But it is an issue on on several several of the cul-de-sacs on that side, because you have Eagles Nest having the same issue that you have. The same with Chloe's, the same with yours. So deputy or sergeant. Lieutenant, lieutenant, yes, oh, yeah, we we. So so lieutenant. So what the, I mean, from your standpoint, because you are a law enforcement, we're telling our residents to call. Um, is there really a a better way that we could handle this, these nuisances besides our? Our our neighbors and our friends who live on these calling in the middle of the night to say there's somebody here causing a lot of. Ruckus, right?
I mean, from the law enforcement, law enforcement point of view. The best way that we know is someone calls it in, if it doesn't get called in, we don't. Know unless we're out driving around, um I'm usually on during the day. And most of the time when I drive around, I'm not seeing anybody in the cul-de-sac. Um. The deputy that is over Elk Creek right now, she usually works from like three P M till two A M. And she does swing up through here quite a bit, and she's like always trying to trying to find something, and she's like lately, she's like, I'm not finding anything. Um, the only issue she found was down in the church parking lot by the mailbox, so. Go to the mailbox. No, no. Yes, yeah, there was a four-door lifted.
I'm just glad you were here while I was driving to be a parent.
So do you think that just continuing with the signage, we talked at the public safety meeting about maybe even putting the ordinance on the bottom of the sign.
So.
So that people could know that it was, that there is a fine involved with that signage.
Right, myself and Ted have um. Talked and he's looking into the cost of the signs and making sure we have that ordinance posted on there and that the fines can be applied on it.
Cause that, I mean, there's no parking a- after dark, but if you put the that there's gonna be a fine and here's the code, maybe that will lessen it as well, but. Again, just getting our residents to call it in so that you have s- some sort of a. A rep- uh you know, a report of when, what time of year there's supposed to be more.
Then I can look and say, hey, what was on Valley Circle? And I can pull that address up or just any time about the circle for the last. Ten years, and I can tell you what's, and if you want that, I can pull it up and we can bring it up in the next. Well.
We just need to tell everybody to call it in, because they're they're trying hard, I mean, when they call us. They're saying, we don't wanna, we just don't wanna call and upset the neighbors or it's not really an emergency, so we don't feel like we should call the. The deputies, but if they call the non-emergency number, it still is reported.
It's still reported, it goes in our logs, so say a deputy gets called up here, and by the time they get up here. There's a good chance that the vehicle's gone, but I can still go back through those call logs, even though there wasn't a case number or uh drawn or anything like that, but I can see the call log. I'd say, okay, it looks like we had quite a few calls, and then I'll readjust my schedule to try to come up during. That timeframe that we're seeing take place.
Eight hours.
And those peak hours.
Hours, make out hours, after the football game.
Get down. So I'm just curious, though, like, Janet, when you guys, is it usually a weekend that you're seeing someone's like?
Yeah, it's usually weekends.
And I talked with Ted, uh Eagles Nest is a popular, it seems like you're around.
Yeah. Really slow.
Yeah. We do have to, we love raising.
Put your brights on, flash the brights as you go by.
Actually, you can you can go on Amazon and get a red light.
Lights will get blue in my head.
Thank you, sorry. Did you have anything else?
Thanks for the progress on that. I just wanted to make some other things from the meeting, uh Jim Anis reported. Since two thousand eighteen, he's been working. To uh to cover the historical and the spiritual side of the fires that that we've lived through. And uh he's up to two thousand pages and he's having some challenges trying to get it down into a hardbound organized fashion. Lots of footnotes, complicated, it's it's a progress. But uh I was hoping to give those books away for Christmas, so I invited him to a meeting to get a progress report and. Not gonna happen this Christmas, but uh he he is really creating a great, a great record of that uh that occasion in the city, so. Just look forward to the book that that he's gonna put out, it'll be a good one. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, uh also another one.
Okay, um so. Nothing new on South Valley. Parks Trails and Recreation, um. They talked to me, talked about the rock garden and Sharon said she sent a letter to Wayne or an email or something to Wayne about it. You got it?
A recent one?
Yeah, something about the rock garden. I don't know, um that we wanted to do it, we thought it was a good idea.
Where's the rock garden gonna be at?
Right by Black Hole in the city park. No?
No.
You come, where is?
At least. At least you've got an update, what what they recommended was a little area just. Just south of the porta potty, quite a ways, or or it's not south, but to the west along the uh fence. There, there was a little space in there, there was a trees cleared, and they thought that would be a good place to locate it.
So be away from the lawn.
Yes.
Which is what my concern was, was we didn't want that to end up in the lawn and in.
It's in the weeds that would be cleared away then.
Okay. Right, that was my concern.
Rocks are there, right, they're just there already, so.
Right, yeah, so it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, anyway, P T R talked about it and. They said that, you know, they would hope that they, people that want the rock garden would also kind of maintain it, but.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I I don't think there'd be a lot to maintain, but should be usually.
Is is it one that has like a some sort of artistic design to it, or is it just some nice ducks?
Or they can paint them, or they wanna paint on them.
There'll be a sign, sign there explaining a little bit about this little.
Yeah, I think it's good, I think we can tell them, like, P T R was in this part of it, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep. And then um they had a dark sky meeting, so they're looking at that, wanting to push that. Um. And then um P T R, we got some of the lights up at the roundabout, they're still working on the rest, it's. Really hard, those pine trees are really big, and even the tallest ladders are only so tall. And you've got a fifty-seven-year-old lady climbing up on the top of that ladder. With her son holding it, anyway, I was sick all weekend, so um. Anyway, so, um, yeah, we probably should find some young bucks to climb up there and put those for Christmas. There'll be more lights for this one, so.
Yeah.
That.
Curious.
I know, I told her I have all of these. I didn't, thank you. I told her, I said, I already did one tree, like, I have all the things. So.
I just want to make sure you're okay.
Well, she was, she was insisting on putting them up, and I said, you're not climbing up on the ladder, give me the lights, so they're supposed to be on my porch tonight, so hopefully. Okay, um and then we have Santa Claus coming to town. So Saturday, December sixteenth, um. And all of the candy canes have been purchased, they're all in my office at my house, if anyone wants to rush, come on over. And um. Yeah, I made a route, we're gonna have seven stops, so we're gonna do it a little bit different this year, um it's very long and laborious, and a lot of the places we've been to, there were no people. That's been my experience the last couple of years, um. We ended up going backtracking on a couple of. Uh circles two or three times, it felt like, and it just took all day. And um so. Fire department, there were people that didn't really, you know, this, just to take a whole day for Christmas is hard. So we're gonna start at ten o'clock and we're going to leave the city center at ten ten, we will arrive at the corner of Maple and Valley View, we will stay there for fifteen minutes, and I will post this all on the website. At ten thirty, we're gonna go to the church by the mailboxes, we'll sit in that parking lot for fifteen minutes. Then at ten fifty, we're gonna go to the State Center parking lot, we'll sit in that parking lot for fifteen minutes. Then we're gonna go at eleven fifteen, we'll go up Summit Creek to their uh their city center there on Nebo. And we'll stay there about ten fifteen minutes, then we'll go up to the city park. And then we'll go to the corner of Oak and Valley View and stay there for another fifteen minutes, and then we'll end here about twelve twenty at the city center. And the kids can do their thing and they'll get their candy and then we'll be done. And so um I think it'll be good, I'm, I will have signs up, I'll have this posted and have signs up by the end of the week. We're going to do those Santa stop signs, so everyone will know where those places are, those are all. I mean, except for the churches, right, but those are already pretty much bus stops, so they're familiar spots, so should be good.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Santa loves it, so, all right.
Santa's happy, and the fire department, I think, is happy.
Will there be an elf, the elf is the drop?
Yes, it'll be real fun this time. If this isn't.
Yeah, it'll be fun. So it'll be really good.
Great, thank you, anything else?
That's it.
Hey, uh. All witness dead.
Christmas magic.
Yeah, no kidding, all Janet did was talk about Santa Claus and.
I knew we should have talked about that sooner than.
Yeah, wow. Carrie?
He's just Jody's face.
He. In um February. And that would be a great asset to the city. Um with regards to the legislative updates, uh they just had interim meetings in November. Uh the session starts January sixteen, local official days is January seventeenth, I was wondering who on the council would like to go? Because they'll have Jody register us for that. There is a charge for going and it's an all-day thing um at the Salt Palace, lunch with the legislators and with other cities. Most of the cities take their youth council, we don't have a youth council, but it is something that if you're interested in attending, um. I think we let Jody know and she she will get those tickets.
What's the date again?
It's uh January seventeenth, Wednesday, local official day.
I've never been, I'd kind of like to go.
That'd be great, and if you want carpool, let me know.
All right, thank you, anything else? Kayla. Council member Brad?
We haven't met, so I'm not gonna report.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mag, like I mentioned, uh at least as far as directly impacting our city, there's. Some appropriations of of money were on the list, um. But uh remains to be seen how we'll fare in the overall vote. S E S D, the one thing I, well, two things I wanted to report with that, um. So, one of the. Resources that S E S D has been pursuing is a small nuclear project, um new scale and uh. Some of you might have read the news recently, but uh. Yeah, that's that's gone, and so it's really, I think it's a real disappointment, because I think that was a really valuable resource, but uh it, you know. The effort is always to find sources of electricity, so the fight goes on, I I will also say that S E S D, if you didn't know, did changes that metering policy too, so. More solar capacity is permitted in the city now too, so.
Yeah, I think we, that was posted, I believe.
Yeah. All right, uh and then personnel. Uh, I uh think that uh. Culturally, we are in a great spot right now and uh. I I I think that uh we're in the honeymoon phase right now and uh, you know, in a few months. I'll seat back, uh but no, I'm just kidding, I.
Will you let us know when you're, when you um are ready, Ted, for the assistant? Um position, you know, I know you were talking about it a little bit, there's been a couple of people in town who feel that they might be qualified for the assistant position and wanted us to make sure that they know when it's gonna be posted. I told them it's kind of on hold right now until you get every, your feet wet and get going, but just let us know. Yeah.
Possibility, but it's it's a little ways down.
Yeah, that's what I said.
All right, thank you, uh upcoming city council meeting items, anybody have anything that they would like to? Um, discuss, Dave, I I this is our.
A long list.
Yeah. I don't know, I I I. Uh the one thing that I regret about having the town hall meeting is that uh it it does. Deprive us of maybe some opportunity to express thanks to you, so thanks for your ears on the council.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be weird not having a dinner. So Mayor, how old is Google, because we have our swearing in and then we'll have a swearing act in the town hall, so.
I I agree, um I I. I I was thinking that we could have swearing in actually as part of the town hall, I think it would be good, so the town hall is scheduled for. I I didn't say the date, I actually. Uh no, I know the date, but did I say seven or did I say sixty, I don't know, I I but if it's at six, then I was thinking that we could do. The swearing in as part of that town hall, then I think that would be, yeah, just beginning, and that other business we could wait until after, and. I don't know, maybe Brian will decide that he wants no part of this uh after a town hall meeting.
So just swearing first.
Yeah, I would wait until after for the swearing in, you gotta walk in then.
We don't have any other. Regular council meeting on that January meeting.
Sa- uh seven P M, okay, so.
Oh, so six to seven will still be our work session.
But I mean, do you, what do you think about the idea of doing the swearing in as part of the town hall, I mean, I don't wanna. Get too far off the rails, but I do think that that would be something that it's nice to have some community participation in, because otherwise it is usually a pretty small audience, so.
So do we still need to have the work session if we're not voting on anything then that night, or is it just to start at seven and do and do the swearing in the same, and then?
Yeah, I I don't, I mean, no one said that they had any agenda items, so we do have to do assignments, um. Yeah, so that that would probably. The timing on that, I mean, I guess we'll just. with timing on that, I mean, I guess we'll just give Brian some assignments before he's sworn in, maybe that will make him decide. Yeah, Wayne?
We'll have. Well, we'll have quite a few ordinance changes for a meeting that night, we're discussing them and voting on them for recommendation tomorrow night.
Okay.
So there's probably seven or eight of them, so there will be some business there to.
So let's just do a regular six o'clock meeting then, and we'll try to knock all that out, and we'll finish the town hall, and hopefully we won't have to come back.
Like six to six-thirty for work session, six-thirty to seven, council meeting to approve your things, and then seven, start the town hall.
I think that's good. Yeah. There's a chance, uh, for a new beginning, I guess. Okay.
One thing for it.
Yeah.
I've been speaking with May, Wayne, about a potential amendment to our animal ordinance. Um, basically just slightly changing concerning roosters, um, and basically taking it from banning roosters, period.
I'm, I'm looking at the, the rooster guy.
I'm talking about you, Aaron. But, but, uh, just shifting it to banning crowing roosters. So shifting the intent of the ordinance to be more imposed than just an outright blanket ban.
Help me understand why you stopped roosters.
They have a, a collar.
There are well-behaved roosters, and there are.
And collars.
How can we get the roosters?
Roosters actually crow through their throat under, under next, um. You've seen.
I, I, roosters, yeah, here.
So what is in favor? So what we, so what?
Those thing of the dogs and the roosters, that it drives.
I can't do much about the dogs, other than like maybe a shock crawler, but that's the owner's power, shot.
Gun.
I love dogs, it's the owners that I had a problem with. Like the ones that just killed some of the chickens in my neighborhood recently. Won't say much about it, but my rooster was killed, my last rooster was killed by a dog who got into my yard and killed all my chickens, uh, back in the spring. But we got a whole new batch, so we're full production again. But what we did with the rooster is, I literally, it probably cost less than fifty cents to make. My wife took a piece of Velcro. She cut it about yay big, and we wrapped it around the, the throat of the rooster. You leave your pinky, that's enough room for the rooster to breathe and to eat. And then after that, when he tries to crow, it goes.
Looking up, so it tightening, but he looks up.
Yes, that's something that ties it up, and also he stopped growing, because he couldn't grow.
That's a really dollar invention, Aaron, you, uh.
Guys, sort it on the internet, just gotta Google it.
You can save it, oh, this isn't your own.
No, I'm not that smart. It was simple.
Are you just gonna lead the council and start rooster college?
I'll tell you, we could. My wife could probably knock out a hundred of them, play for the rest of an hour.
For what it's worth, it's like trying to go around and spay a bunch of, um, skunks. It can be done.
Yes, you are right, it's just like a stuff.
So currently, our ordinance reads.
Because there was an egg shortage and a huge chicken shortage, not so long ago.
Repairness is an important thing to have, guys. Being able to reproduce our own food at our home is a very good thing to have.
I got turkeys. Well, a flock, a flock also is a healthier flock with a rooster, they're there for.
You're a happier flock, right?
Might not actually be, yeah. But what I'm trying to look at is from a, a legislative standpoint, I would prefer that we shift our legislation from blanket banning of things to, what is the intent? Currently, we banned roosters, period. And it was due to noise, which I completely agree. Well, that's due to, you can't, you can't change a pig, right? In the sense of, we banned them because of smell, right, and destruction.
I know, there's people bringing them to their house, so.
But that's all true, but what I'm trying to get at is, the easy route for us was to ban roosters. I personally do not feel good about my vote there, because it was, it was an excessive measure in a, in my opinion, okay?
Well, and, 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 this is probably not. So I'd say this should be an agenda for an upcoming council.
Correct, what Wayne wants to know, though, is prior to him taking up my amendment for the Planning Commission, he wants to get a semi-gut feel of the council to see if it's worth the planning commission's time.
I, I was bad on this.
I am too, I am too.
So, yeah, well, Dave, you're leaving.
It's okay.
Brought the rooster, and not gonna move on to it, wrong in the neighborhood, and it's.
If you let me know, I'll find it, I can rehold it.
It's behind Ricky Bert's, and he's.
We, we can, we can find those and rehold them. I know a person who accepts roosters. But, is that what you were looking for, Wayne?
Yes, I'll, we'll go ahead and put something together, but with full disclosure, that will be very difficult to enforce.
Yeah.
And it's not an absolute, roosters will still crow, but not as loud. That's, I've talked to a few people who have tried those collars, and they help some, they mute a lot, but the rooster's still crowing. So if, if you've got a next-door neighbor, you're still gonna be potentially complaining. And it, it just, it makes it more difficult to enforce.
Yeah, I think the importance on this is gonna be a night.
Well, it's the same with the dogs, I mean.
And we don't enforce.
Don't enforce the dogs anymore, we could say.
We can't even, you just call Jody, you can follow him, he got hurt.
Well, actually, what this does. Potentially easier, I mean, if these collars were, saying that it will be, if you were growing roosters and so.
I'm talking to dogs.
Oh, yeah, well, dogs.
Well, maybe what we do is if you're, if you're, maybe we start saying, okay, if you have an animal that makes noise, you have to suppress the noise.
Or something, you know, it's like, we bring our dogs in at night, and it's so cold, and it will be nineteen degrees outside, and it's way too cold. And you can hear a dog in the distance barking, and it, it's abuse, and it makes me sad. We have a mudroom, ours come in, they have dog beds every night, you're in, and then in the mud, we don't. And then they don't bark, the neighbors sleep.
Yeah.
I've got a dog that's just incessant all night long.
They talk to it.
We, we've had some degree of success with the deputy. When we pinpoint a house that has a dog, they go and talk to them, and they, they're generally met with some acceptance and understanding. And I won't say it completely, although it's a problem, but it makes the owner sensitive to, to it, and that people are complaining about it, so. There's been some limited success with dogs, but yeah, your point's made.
What I do is I just call them and say, can you please give me the code to your garage, I'd like to put your dog inside, and they almost always come to me. Because they are.
I apologize for threatening that, yeah.
I mean, quite a, we get that, uh, robust debate, uh, I don't know when you're thinking of, uh.
I'll give that to, to Wayne to manage with the planning commission and get to us when it gets to us.
Okay.
I just eliminated my piece of.
Alright, well, you can't. Being.
Mayor, can I make one other comment?
Yeah.
I thought of making this when we, we had the discussion, but I was, I wasn't sure, and I still may misspeak. But if we have easements, that are utility easements, we can't use them, nor should we use them for emergency purposes. So I don't know with this easement that is on the Kobe property, if that's a utility easement, there.
Can't be a trail, can't be a.
Why post anything? We've got utilities, but it's all over the city, that don't have a single sign to them. And if, if, if we're, if people are abusing that, then that's, that's up to that family to take care of the problem. It's, we shouldn't be using it or trying to protect it as an emergency exit, if that's, if that's why we're kind of keeping it in mind and wanting to preserve it. So I just wanted to make, uh, make that statement, that, um, if it's utility easement, we have nothing to do with, with people crossing their property, that's, that's up to them to, to lease that.
Right, or, but if they're profiting, are part of the property to get to their property, we could put a sign.
We could.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I think the discussion was, is people are using it as if it's a trail easement, instead of what it was supposedly for, or why they put up the original signs as an emergency exit, even though it's never been used for that, so take down those signs on the other side. The citizens who own that property can put the no trespassing in the gate or whatever, but on the side that we own, we should also put something, no trespassing, because it's, it's not really meant as a, as a public access, it's just a public easement that we have, so people shouldn't treat it as if it's public property, like, like other places of the city.
Look, it's not even, it's restricted.
Right, it's a restricted easement.
Emergency exit, I think, is sort of been read as an interpretation to kind of participate. Okay, thanks, Wayne, good, good comment. Hey, well, thanks to Wayne, now we get a four-minute break.
The bunny factory in our own city, so people can start thinking about that. Thanks, just to let you know that, um, we're gonna be a little bunny factory at the Gilbert household, and I wanna make those available and teach people how to actually raise their own rabbits, uh, as well as chickens. And, um, other things that keep them successful. They do.
People raise them just for meat bunnies, and.
These, these, these are, these are New Zealand bunnies, they are meat chickens, are meat.
I had neighbors that had meat bunnies.
So they'll get, they get to about eight pounds, eight to ten pounds, full size, so, and they taste like chicken. Uh, any questions?
No, thank you.
So, so we're doing, there'll be ready program, okay? Guys, I want, I want eggs, and, yes, and the mummy, uh, chickens get old and degrade and stop producing, so you gotta have a way of replacing them. Yeah. It is a good list. Uh, if anybody has any recommendations or, well, recommendations, I'm going to next year, and what we can do better in the Be Ready Program, let me know. I'm always, I'm trying to make it better each year. Um, our numbers are growing slowly, but surely we've got some diehard members now that just regularly attend every time, and then hope to double it this year, so, so, it's going to be our second year. Alright.
Hey, anybody else wishing to comment? Alright, we will close, your comment, portion of the meeting, item sixteen, consent agenda, city council, meeting minutes, November fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Get a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Blunt.
Also good.
Seconded by Councilmember Hill, you're all in favor?
Alright.
I think that motion carries. Uh, item seventeen, resolution, canvas of the November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three municipal election. Uh, and, and, I mean, obviously, Brian, congratulations, um, I'm looking forward to working with you, so, well done.
And when do I get my condolences?
I, I've never met you before. Yeah, yeah, well, I, I, I heard you go and says, I'm sure Brian's able to come up more on social media, and she wasn't.
Really quick, before you go and approve it, um, we have eleven-hundred-and-nine active registered voters in the city. Uh, four-hundred-and-twenty-four ballots were counted, so we had just a little over thirty-eight percent of registered voters vote. Any other questions?
That's not very, was that pretty typical, it was better than the county.
What, what was our, uh, reject number?
Um, we don't call them reject numbers.
So whatever the correct.
Signature discrepancies or people voting for the dead, ten.
Voting for the dead, or the dead voted? Did you have that one locked up, Ryan? Did you have that one locked up, Ryan? Yeah, I I was a little concerned with the way the ballot read, uh about how many uh rejected ballots there might be, is that, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I was more concerned about just the rank choice process confusing people and not getting the rejection.
Yeah.
But if, if the dead are coming back to vote, you know, that's a different problem.
That's the county problem.
No, that's rejected and um. So that includes like.
Yeah, that's the county's problem and on who they.
Signature discrepancies and everything, there was.
So there were votes, just to be clear, there were votes that were single vote, that's all they did. That that was very clear in what the county was putting out, there are single votes, so people were, in my opinion, that that. Goes to show that people were incredibly confused by the rank choice voting. Because some people voted for one person and that wasn't.
Wow, it it I thought it was uh this year's ballot, I I don't know that I would. Want to make choice voting in a few, two years.
Well, and what Jody and I talked about is the wordage that um that Heaver City uses is a little more clear and maybe. That if we choose to do it again, using that wordage would help clear that up.
That verbage would possibly help, yeah.
Hey Julie, I might understand that eleven hundred ballots were sent.
Eleven hundred and nine.
And and what do they do if they don't vote?
My two daughters that looked at me for like three weeks, they got ballots.
I mean, I'm two.
But they had moved out, so they didn't vote.
Right. So they got a ballot, but they're 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 not here to vote, I wasn't going to fake their signature. You know, we had even call and get an opinion.
No.
I mean, is that illegal?
So two years ago, when my son was on a mission, I mailed his ballot. And then he was able to put it in the mail in Detroit, Michigan, as long as it was postmarked on the right day and it came to us. Yeah.
So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not shocked at the thirty eight percent number, that's typical for a. Non presidential election year.
I think the county was only twenty one, twenty two percent, something low though. For overall county, so we were, we were a lot higher than the rest of the cities.
The percentage was less for Woodland Hills than it was our last.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, yeah, but we did win broke rank choice last time too.
Yeah.
In the last midterm. That's what we were talking about, midterm.
Last midterm wasn't ranked.
No, no, last midterm was not ranked choice. Last, last election was there, yeah.
Yeah, the midterm was, cause you can only use rank choice in municipal ballots, you can't use it on any other ballots. Yeah, could you three go rank choice? So the last time we did a municipal ballot, it was rank choice. And then we did it this time, that that is a little war, we did an election, a little war, there was a lot of.
All right, well, so with that, are we ready to uh move to um through? Is is without any language, Julie, it's the canvassing of the November twenty one, twenty twenty three municipal.
I would think that the two that weren't running.
I'll make a motion fifty.
Motion by council member Brad, seconded by council member Blunt, all in favor? Hey, Harry's approval, item eighteen, approval of Jones and Mill, assignment order for some water management to be R I C grant.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by council member Hilliard. Uh the second is, seconded by council member Kinston, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, item nineteen, reporting the rezon request from R two to R one. For the Aipert property at West twenty one, West Lakeview Way.
Almost into that.
Motion by councilor Mountvich.
This is simply saying, planning commission, go.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Blunt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
The one note on that. It's, it won't come back to us. If they approve it or no, I I I think it's, it goes to planning commission, that's it, rezones now. Right, doesn't come back to the council.
When does that take?
Not yet, till December of next year with the subdivision laws.
Yeah, I think we still come back to the council with it now, okay.
Yeah, next January, I think it will change.
It's legislatures like.
We'll just need to make sure, we look at that. Process, of course, if you vote to make sure we have final plans at this point going forward.
Okay, um item twenty, resolution approving September twenty twenty three check disbursements.
I'll make a motion.
Council member Blunt, seconded by council member Kinston, all in favor? Opposed. No large purposes or expenditures. Um, closed session. Unless someone wants to have a discussion about uh. Any items that would be subject to a closed session, I am not recommending one, but uh.
Think it's up to David.
Yeah, one set up, closed session. Okay. I don't know that you stop hitting the phones. All right, well, then I, we get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a final motion to adjourn by council member Brad. All in favor? Especially as you do.